Hello, hello, hello. Good evening, good afternoon.
That was Tom.
Tom. Thank you, Tom, Vice Chair Cohen. Welcome to the Joint Board of Supervisors and School Board meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll for the Board of Supervisors, please?
They're back here. They're busy.
They're busy.
Okay, all right. Here we're in there. Okay, all right. So, um, will you call your board?
Yes. Ms. Hall, would you call the roll, please?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know. Do you want to, go ahead, go ahead and call the roll if you want to do that. It's okay.
Okay. Attorney said we don't need to.
The attorney? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Goffis?
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halstead?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
And Ms. Sherry?
Thank you. I am going to turn this over to Ms. Light that's going to take us out of the dark. I just love it.
Oh, that's so cute.
That was cute.
I'm proud.
Well, sometimes the same joke works over and over. It does. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Taylor and School Board are here to present their budget to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Supervisors and Staff. I want to thank you for providing the opportunity for our School Board members to come together around your table to share important information regarding the FY '24, fiscal year '24 budget of Stafford County Public Schools. We invite you to grow with us as we work together to elevate Stafford schools and our community to be a better place to live, work, and learn. Our presentation will be approximately 30 to 40 minutes, and we ask that questions be held until the presentation is complete to allow for maximum time for discussion. Growth has impacted all agencies in all areas in Stafford County. For our schools, we have grown 6,000 students in the last 10 years, and current projections say we will grow 6,000 more in the next 10 years. The explosive student growth requires us to grow our staff, our services, and our learning spaces. So let's begin with our students. Our recent student scores, shared with each of you by Ms. Sigmund, has created a clear picture of where we are and what we need to improve. We continue to adjust our teaching and learning strategies to meet the changing needs of our diverse learning population. In our adopted five-year strategic plan, we are preparing to increase opportunities for our students for life after graduation through work-based learning opportunities, industry certifications, military preparedness, along with Governor's School Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate Dual Enrollment, and College Prep Pathways. Every day, our educators and staff work hard to educate and provide necessary services for all children that come to Stafford County Public Schools for their learning years. As noted, each of our students require just three things. One, staff. We recruit staff from everywhere. Some of our recruits include our own students who come back to teach for us, me. Some of our recruits are parents involved in the schools who grow into just the staff member we need. We are the largest employer in Stafford County and are proud to have 72% of our educator workforce call Stafford County home and supply the county with their tax dollars. Granting schools proper funding will allow us to give well-deserved raises to our staff and adjust our pay scales to continue our work towards retaining teachers that may otherwise leave us for better-paying counties. Our compensation schedule is outlined in our five-year budget plan. Of course, this plan can be changed and altered as the years go on or as the need arises and the board changes. Currently, our staffing standards support our five-year budget plan, which aligns with our current five-year adopted strategic plan, to grow our school system, to meet the future needs of our students. Compensation is not our only way of growing a powerful education team in Stafford. In the last few years, we have added Mentor 360. This program has 400 staff working for not one but two years to support new hires in the classroom, with professional development and even personal support, such as places to live, Department of Motor Vehicles, and finding medical resources. These mentors work to support and elevate our newest members of Team Stafford while excelling in their positions as educators. Throughout the year, we work to recognize and offer appreciation for many of our hard-working professionals. Two, our services. The type of services we provide our students to ensure their success has grown. An example would be our English language learners. In 2017, 2018, we were servicing 999 students. This year, as of March 1st, we are serving 3,062. Growing needs means we need to increase support to educate each child and work with their families on ways to advocate, receive services for what they need as they grow within our Stafford schools. Learning disabilities, emotional support, food insecurities, family challenges are only some of the resources we provide with the amazing work of our special educators. We have growing social and emotional needs and learning recovery post-COVID, which requires more specialists to support the learning journey. As the world and job markets change, it is paramount we pivot our teaching and learning services to best meet the challenges for our students to find their successful path. Science, technology, engineering, art, and math, otherwise known as STEAM, biomedical, energy, industry certification options, along with workforce, military, or college readiness, all require us to prepare our students earlier using hands-on and meaningful practices. Earlier this year, we offered Chart Your Future for seniors at the Expo Center. Colleges, military, workforce, and even our own Stafford County agencies supported the event. Bande Center staff and other community partners taught breakout sessions on personal finance, job interview tips, and questions to ask colleges as the search begins, just to name a few. One of your agencies, Stafford County Parks and Rec, could not fill positions to work for Falmouth Beach last summer and paid higher-wage staff to cover. Lifeguard positions went unfilled. Mr. Southall shared with me that he was able to get many names of students at this event and recently collaborated with Stafford County Schools to get the information into the schools for a job fair event held this past weekend. We love collaboration and opening up job opportunities as a way to provide services to more students. Currently, we are operating at a 115 classroom deficit. Growth requires us to prioritize seat count to provide better instruction. High School 6 and ES-18 are a start. High School 6 was originally proposed by the School Board in 2008 and will not be opened until the fall of 2026. ES-18 was originally proposed by the School Board in 2011 and will not be opened until fall of 2026. ES-19 was proposed in 2021, and it is also needed in 2026. With new build projects overdue, increased space demands, we have currently placed two trailers to add four classrooms at Rocky Run and two trailers to add four classrooms at Conway. In the next two years, while we wait for ES-18 and ES-19, 10 of our 17 elementary school campuses will have trailers for a total of 48 classrooms. Forty-eight classrooms is the total classrooms in the new Moncur Elementary School. To avoid adding more trailers, we have proposed and will vote this evening to move 58 more students from the new Moncur to Wide Water Elementary School. Timely opening is key to addressing seat deficits. Our aging infrastructure needs attention as well. 63% of our buildings are over 20 years old. Our repair, renovate, and rehabilitate, otherwise known as 3R, projects include boilers, chillers, generators, security systems, roofs, restrooms, mechanical systems, and HVAC are all on the list for this year. They are necessary replacements and refurbishments. However, the projects I just listed are currently unfunded projects for this year at just over $8 million. Stafford County has great needs, and I appreciate the work of my fellow School Board members as we proceed to share more specific information on the fiscal year '24 needs of our schools and what could happen if funding is not adequate to support our teaching and learning mission. First, I would like to say thank you. This is our third meeting of our boards in this fiscal year '24 CIP and budget cycle. On October 18th, we met at Brookpoint High School to discuss the capital improvement plan. Our School Board came with a simple message: Please exchange the rebuild of Hartwood for new build of ES-18 and build ES-18 and ES-19 simultaneously. Both sides expressed not wanting to rehash history and blame, but rather be more solution-oriented as we proceed forward. On December 6th, both boards met in this room and discussed the TRC ranking, and again, the School Board shared the same request. We sincerely appreciate the Board of Supervisors' vote to move new build ES-18 up in place of rebuilt Hartwood. Still remaining from our previous discussion is to move new build ES-19 simultaneously with ES-18. This would allow us to have more than 1,900 seats for students inside our school buildings. We thank you for your ongoing support. We had community members Carol Leicher and Margaret Lowry come before both of our boards week in and week out. Our room was full of masked speakers, and these two ladies kept with their mission. They were appealing for turf fields for North Stafford and Colonial Forge. The will of our board was to support those requests. Maybe we should have them do our budget request. Once again, we would like to thank you for partnering with us to make something happen that would level the playing field. With increasing safety concerns related to our students, community, and even the upcoming influx of trailers, our board has asked for more SPOs and SROs. Partnering with Sheriff Decatur and his department has been nothing short of supportive. We would like to thank you for supporting our request for more safety and security measures for our youngest citizens. Finally, last year, we asked for support on the first phase of our salary adjustment to our scale. We appreciate the support your board gave to stop the flow of teachers leaving our classrooms in Stafford County. With your support, we were able to make a slight improvement in our teacher retention and recruit more seasoned staff. Both scenarios benefit our students. We are hopeful for similar results this year as we ask for your support in our second phase of salary adjustments, and we look forward to collaborating and making more good things happen for students, staff, and community. We appreciate the work the county administrator did on his slide regarding his proposed budget for Stafford County Schools, and we appreciate the opportunity to add context as we move forward with our presentation. The slide states 17.5 million or 8.3% increase to schools is proposed for our operating budget. However, the actual number being proposed for our operating budget is 11.7 million. So how does this compute? 4.5 million for debt service should be subtracted, as this is paid on the county side and does not contribute to our operating funds. Additionally, the 274,000 should be subtracted, as the county pays for day school, and it is also not part of our school operating funds. Lastly, 1 million is being set aside for capital outlay, which also does not count towards our operational costs or pay for our teachers and programs. The county administrator's budget is 37.5 million short of our board's approved budget request. The actual 11.7 million increase in operating funds in the county administrator's budget will not cover the well-deserved taxes the School Board-approved budget would like to give our staff. Seeing government and non-uniformed members of fire, rescue, and police having a proposed rate of 8% is great, considering we have a 6.5% inflation increase. Seeing elements of uniformed law enforcement receiving 10.5% and 17.5% raises and salary adjustments is also fantastic for the same reasons. On the other hand, seeing schools being underfunded, so we cannot give proposed raises and salary scale enhancements, is extremely disappointing. Our school division has done a lot to help ourselves make it work. During a national teacher shortage, we board a Prince William County, who currently pays 6,000 more at the beginning of the teacher scale and over 50,000 more at the end of the teacher scale. This averages to a difference of 25,000. If we do not receive adequate compensation in our true operating budget, then just south of us in Spotsylvania with their proposed teacher salary scale, they will surpass us. Reality. The reality is inflation is 6.5%, and not being able to pay our educators a raise and make the proposed salary scale adjustment makes it nearly impossible for us to compete with other localities. Our student growth increased this year by 2%, and 1% growth is projected for next year. So how can this be resolved? As the county administrator suggested in his budget presentation, your job is to balance resources and needs. We urge you to consider that while Stafford County is the fifth wealthiest county in the Commonwealth in household income, Stafford County Schools are ranked 112 out of 132 in per pupil expenditure. Our percentage of students per household at 18.6% is higher than Prince William. We continue to grow in students and must be competitive in our pursuit to attract and retain our most valuable resource to the educational system: our teachers.
Ms. Healy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that was an excellent summary of our overall needs. I'm going to get into something that's pretty straightforward and simple to follow. The budget that we have approved includes $16.4 million of new money, and that means it's money that is not included in the current operating year's budget. And that new money is to staff for growth, to implement the first phase of the adopted staffing standards, and generally to keep the lights on. That's our lights in the schools as well as other sites. And some examples of this new money that's in our approved budget are staffing to meet school site standards, staffing and school site allocations for growth, increase cost of requirements for contracts and services, contractual increases for inflation and growth, our new custodial contract, increases to the employer portion of health insurance costs, increases to hourly compensation, increases to bus costs, maintenance and repair, and fuel, and utility increases. A detailed list of the items that are included in the $16.4 million are on this worksheet in big print that's been provided to everyone, and it's the middle portion that is headed "Nondiscretionary Requirements." Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
Okay. Dr. Warner, just hold on one second. I just want to let everybody know there were the lunch boxes or the dinner boxes in the kitchen. If you wanted to take a break at some point in time to get those, otherwise they're going to get cold or...
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Your chairwoman forgot to mention that.
No, I didn't. You didn't tell me. It's your...
Thank you, Madam Chair. As one of the most important factors in determining a child's success in the classroom is the quality of the teacher, and we are currently in a historic teacher shortage. Stafford County Public Schools, as Ms. Randall said, is the largest employer, and most of our staff are teachers. It's important to note that the county recognized the importance of pay raises for their staff, public safety. We certainly understand that all of our county employees are important, and 3/4 of our employees actually live and work in Stafford County. So if you note, our pay raises, their request is on par with the increases that the county has already authorized for its own employees. But one of the issues that we face is our staff is very young staff. So 57% of our teachers have less than 10 years of experience. In fact, in 2023, 30% of our new employees had, were new hires, were just out of college, less than a year experience. But worse than that, we lose, of the teachers that leave us, 2/3 of them quit in their first five years and they go somewhere else, or they leave the profession entirely. And most of what they do is they leave us and they go to Prince William, where they can, are guaranteed more money. So the problem that we face is that we have to create, we have to create a salary scale that's on par. And our priority in this budget, 85% of our budget is benefits and compensation, and that is our priority in this budget. Not only to fix the license scale, but also to work on the uniforms, to fix the uniform salary scale and to adjust the pay rise, and it does also adjust some of the stipends that we pay for additional services, teachers who volunteer their time. So Prince William is our competition, and we have no illusions that we are going to be able to surpass Prince William's pay scale, but we have to get closer to meeting that mark. So if you look at this chart, you'll see Prince William exceeds us by quite a bit. But the more onerous image is the fact that Spotsylvania's new teacher pay scale matches us. And we recruited a number of good teachers with experience last year from Spotsylvania. We don't want to, we don't want to lose those teachers. So our proposal for the second year of our phased-in teacher salary scale will put us up to that 10-year mark. It will boost, and then we will continue adding to that in the next subsequent years as we've proposed in our five-year budget. But we have to stay ahead of Spotsylvania, and we have to work to reach a, a mark that's closer to where Prince William is. Thank you.
So I was asked to speak to this slide because my fellow board members know I'm quite passionate about instruction, and I'm very concerned about the trends I see in mathematics and special education. So let's first look at the situation with math. We recently asked Stafford County parents what careers they would like their children to be prepared for. The top four answers were computer science and data analytics, business, engineering, and health science. All four of these careers require a solid foundation in mathematics to be successful. In the same work session where the survey results were presented, we received data about mathematics performance. We learned that for grades 6 to 8, only 63% of our students tested at grade level, and that computes to 2,670 Stafford County middle schoolers performing below grade level in mathematics. We also learned that only 33% of our high school students were hitting the benchmark on the PSAT, indicating preparedness for college mathematics. On this slide, you can see we are short 15 math teachers this year. We have 13 middle and high schools. This suggests that every one of our secondary schools is short at least one math teacher. That's a problem. With that in mind, Dr. Taylor has suggested that we increase compensation for these hard-to-staff positions. What about special education? In 2020, the Virginia Department of Education failed to meet federal requirements to support students with disabilities. In 2022, Virginia's most critical teacher shortage area was in special education. So on this slide, you can see that we are struggling to fill these positions, and we need to do a better job of meeting the needs of students who are struggling. And so Dr. Taylor had pulled this piece out of his budget. The School Board put it back in because we think it is really essential that we take care of these critical needs areas. And I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Guy.
Yes, I need this on. Differentiated school site allocations, that's what I'm going to talk about really quickly. $1.4 million is a little over 2% of our ask for the county transfer. When you look at our school sites, there's a lot of disparity in regards to what parents and PTOs can do for their students. Some schools have more English learning students, others have more economically disadvantaged students, and some schools have more students with disabilities, and some have a ton of all of those students, and they all need their needs met individually. But, and they all need resources, and resources cost money, and that's what we're short on. This $1.4 million is a small portion of our ask, but it has the greatest potential to do the most good. Last year, we had to cut this from our budget due to our budget limitations based on the county's transfer. It's good to have the money follow the students, but most of our budget doesn't do that when 80% of our budget is just salary and benefits. When differen, yeah, I cannot say that word ever. When differentiated school site allocation is cut from our budget, that means school field trips or family game nights where they teach the families how to integrate math and actual fun, which I didn't know was a thing until I went to one of those. And when we learn how to incorporate numeracy and fun, those, those type of things go away. In grades 2 to 5, only 50% of our economically disadvantaged students and our English learner students met their growth goals in math. It's even lower for our students with disabilities. We must address this, and in order to do that, we need resources, money. To not address that is leaving these students out. In grades 6 to 8, the data is basically the same or even worse. In grades 8 to 9, less than 33% of these students that we're speaking on met their benchmark for the PSATs, which is for college readiness. In grades 10 and 11, that number falls to 20%. This is what chronic underfunding does to students' learning. We can't expect our school system to make up for the deficiencies without the necessary resources. When we hear supervisors speak on reasons to not ever raise taxes, they usually speak in terms of families and how they are impacted and what that means to them. When we hear those same voices speak about the schools or our budget, it is usually not in the same terms of families or students or children, and that needs to be the focus, our children. That's it.
Thank you.
There we go. This board voted to add 2 million to our Pago major maintenance last year. It did not make the cut. We have asked for a larger investment this year because our needs are large. Year-over-year, our 3R project list for scheduled maintenance is $15 to $20 million. Year-over-year, only a fraction of those projects are funded. For reference, this year, fiscal year '23, over 8 million of the nearly $16 million 3R funds, 3R list was funded. 6.2 million was funded by bonds. For fiscal year '24, we have over 17 million in scheduled projects. Over 9 million of it is unfunded. 6.5 million is scheduled to be funded by bonds. Looking forward to 2025, another $17.5 million in planned maintenance with 9.5 of it unfunded and another 6.5 million debt planned. This setup creates two major issues for us. One, our first concern, is that when we only plan to fund a fraction of our 3R expenses, we are not magicking away the rest of them. These items get delayed or postponed indefinitely. Like with our vehicles, when we defer our scheduled maintenance, we begin tempting fate. I believe our community would rather pay for the required upkeep on our county assets than to continually pay for emergency repairs that delays cause. As most of our infrastructure is aging and over 20 years old, we cannot ignore these costs. Second, the funding we do not, we do get is not cash. As I've learned watching meetings, we accrue about 80,000 annually in debt service payments for every $1 million we finance. So when we borrow 5 to 7 million each year to fund scheduled maintenance, we're signing up for $400,000 to $550,000 in interest payments for 20 years. This is penny wise but pound foolish. This is scheduled maintenance that we can plan for, and we're asking you to fund this planned expense with cash outright so that we can preserve incurring debt for more important endeavors like building schools. Costs for repairs continue to rise. Availability of products is slower than we're used to. Having direct funding for our major maintenance costs will allow us to take care of these items in the most cost-efficient, time-efficient, and student-efficient...
in the most cost-efficient, time-efficient, and student-efficient way possible. The superintendent has proposed a five-year budget that will allow us to build up our major maintenance funding to the recommended level of 2.5% of our $800 million in school assets. We are asking for a larger investment in the fiscal year '24 budget so that we can begin to make up some of the ground we've lost in keeping up on our maintenance and take more moderate steps towards funding the goal in future years.
So I'm going to be talking to the community in terms of our building. I'm going to start with this quote. "The true measure of any society may be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. It's a secret that the tragedy of school closures has a very serious effect on our children. Giving their limited world experience coupled with their unvetted access to social media and information well beyond their years of understanding being incurred, being occurred..." I'm sorry. Coming at them every day, the overcrowding of our schools is truly setting our most vulnerable up for failure in a way many of them cannot recover from. You've all seen this chart before, so there are no surprises, or there shouldn't be. The first thing people do when they move is look at the school system rating. Imagine a family looking at this projection and wondering what life is like for a child in a Stafford County school with these numbers. What this says to them is that Stafford County doesn't invest money into their schools. It's an easy trip from this graph to people turning away from Stafford County as a place to call home, especially when they then find out there's nothing here for them to do as a family. There's no movie theaters, bowling alleys, field houses for competitive sports or tournaments. Nothing that says we built community, just houses. We lost a lot of teachers to mask mandates and virtual learning. 20 to 1 is the recommended student-teacher ratio. Oh, I'm sorry. We are currently at 26 to 1 in some of our better situations, and in some cases, 30 to 1. We continue to lose teachers for a variety of reason. But we lose them to the social and emotional problems that are occurring in our schools every day. Disrespect for children who have no boundaries or limitations, parents that demand their child's behavior be excused. We've tripled the burden on our teachers and administrative staff. And we've asked that, while we continue to effectuate an education last-growth-first mentality. Let's take a look at these numbers. Stafford County residents are patient and willing to understand growing pains as we move forward. But how much longer do we accept them to, do we expect them to accept that raising their taxes is the only acceptable solution to funding our needs as a county and bringing revenue in? How about we find more creative ways to support our children and their growth here and their experience in building community? Ways like courting small businesses with family-friendly activities. We need to be mindful of the fact that people can move out just as easily as they move in. Final slide. So let's look at some facts, true facts about overcrowding in our schools. Overcrowded schools have an automatic shorter lifespan and cost exponentially more to fix, maintain, and repair as capacity-held schools. Hartwood is your prime example of that. We are bursting at the seams, and the building reflects that. Our kids receive less individualized attention and instruction. The impact of this is clearly reflected on our testing scores and post-secondary math readiness assessments. Discipline and behavioral issues cause substantially more chaos and instructional interruption than is sustainable for learning accommodation. Teacher burnout rates skyrocket in overcrowded buildings. The harmful effect on health, on the health of students, excuse me, both physically and mentally. Public safety provided to staff, teachers, and students is almost impossible to promise, particularly if a large-scale incident occurs. Traffic congestion and pedestrian safety at pickup and drop-off times is almost impossible to contain. Exponential increases in fighting, bullying, and school violence, which you will see in our end-of-year SRO report, are daily updates and the discipline reports provided each month. And these are just the things that are caught, reported, and actually disciplined by the principal. And these are not, these do not account for the things that are happening outside of our school system with our kids. Trailers are not an acceptable substitute for school buildings that support our students. The interruptions to classroom activities and instructional time are significant. And we increase the risk of injury to our children on the number of trips they take to and from the trailers to the school buildings every day for various activities, just going to the bathroom being one of them. I've read a lot of articles and scholarly journals, if you will, on overcrowding in our school systems and the impact it has. And literally, the only single solitary conclusion that they come up with is build new schools. It took some time for me to understand in the beginning why I had to make Hartwood a sacrificial lamb for a desperately needed new elementary school. That was a tough pill for me to swallow. Meanwhile, Dr. Chase over here has had to beg us and plead that we not forget her students, also Stafford County kids, at Drew Middle. That's an unacceptable reality for a school system like Stafford County. This budget is truly a needs-based budget to help our school system stay competitive and offer our students the educational experience the residents have come to expect and should expect that we provide to their children. If the true measure of a society is how we treat our most vulnerable, and our most vulnerable are our children, and we know all the things that we have mentioned above to be true, and we do not fully fund this budget, then it is well within my understanding why 67% of our high school students could not meet benchmark.
We appreciate your sole consideration of the school board's approved budget in front of you. As suggested in the county administrator's budget proposal, we are not growing in per pupil expenditure. We are the fifth wealthiest county in the Commonwealth and seeded at 112 out of 132 school districts. This should not be acceptable to our community. You are in the perfect position to change and improve these outcomes. We appreciate your professionalism and partnership for positive changes for Stafford County public schools as we strive to reach your strategic goal of highest-quality education in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Do you want to open it up for questions? I see Supervisor Vanuch.
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. I'm sure most of you in the room saw me get up at the beginning and go over to speak to Supervisor English. His wife texted me, there's a family emergency with a family member of his, so he had to leave the meeting. I think some of our board members know, but I don't want to air his family business in a public meeting. So I just wanted to let you know it's not because he doesn't want to be here or that he heard something he didn't like. He did have a family emergency, and she texted me because he left his phone downstairs and he needed to go and get it and then, and leave. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that and, and explain that.
Did you want to break for your dinner?
Yeah, thank you. No, I don't want any, anybody else needs to break to get something to eat. Feel free to ask one of either, yeah. There's on the back, so if you want to grab something to eat. We could continue with the, did you have a question though, or you're good? Okay. Do you want to take answer, question, because you asked to wait until after?
Sure, yeah, we're ready.
So who wants to start? You don't have any?
I mean, mine is more so a comment.
Okay, I have the question. I just want to know if my question made it to be answered, for you to bring something back. Do you want to, yeah?
Yeah, Dr. Young, I was able to email you-
Do you want to share the question so that everybody knows what I asked?
Sure, you were asking about our federal pandemic relief funds and how those had been expended since the beginning of the pandemic. And so I was able to actually email you late this afternoon before the meeting with a report on that and shared that with our board members, and I'm, I'm sure we can share that with the rest of the Board of Supervisors as well. But it breaks down all our different elements of our COVID pandemic relief funds that we received from the federal government and where they were allocated to.
Okay. Supervisor Vanuch.
Chair, question, when you look at the difference between the superintendent's request and the school board approved request, are there, so what is that, $26 million or so? What were the big items that are on the non-discretionary and discretionary expenditures that came, that made up that $26 million?
That's a great question. So on non-discretionary, there is no change because it's just that. It's non-discretionary. But you can see them highlighted below on your sheet. And they are the last one, two, three, four, five, six items that are added under discretionary expenditures on top of what was a part of the superintendent's proposal, and they're tagged "school board adjustment." So those are the items specifically. And the board highlighted them during their presentation.
All right, thank you, Dr. Taylor. If you had to rank those last five items, do you know how the school board would rank those? And maybe that's a question for the school board, not for you.
Yeah, I certainly hope it's for them and not for me. I'd hate to split the baby on that one.
So I, Madam, just to answer that for you, Ms. Vanuch, just to answer that for you. I think that when we talked about these when they were first taken off, I, you know, we, we did have the conversation, you know, which of these do you find to have more weight over the other? But they're just, at this point, because of where we are as a school system and the number of years, you know, rightfully, some of this is because of the inflationary rates and the trouble that we're having, you know, we're having getting, being competitive. The cocoa from the state didn't come through. We're looking at ways to really keep our head above water here with our school systems. The number of, you know, as Dr. Chase was saying, the number, trying to find a math teacher is like trying to find a needle in a needle stack at this point. And it's, so, so that's why we can't, I guess if we were going to say anything could take a lower option, you know, you'd go, okay, well, it can be that one because we can't really, but that's not an option either because our math scores are so off-the-chart horrible. And that's just the only way we can come up with it. If our buildings weren't in such disrepair, we probably could take away the Pago maintenance and forego that for one more year. But we don't have that option because the infrastructure isn't right yet. And, and as we're getting further and further along, and inflation is becoming a bigger and bigger deal, most of these were seen as, like, if we don't do this today, then there's no telling how much inflation will impact us next year. And what we're looking at here is $3 million could very well be $8 next year. We just don't know. So that's where we came as a group during our discussion. But that's my, my recall of the conversation and how I personally feel. So I, you know, if anybody has anything else on that. But that was the discussion.
Madam Chair, may I add something? So one of the other things that I would also say is that I know, you know, there's always little things that we get to take away from these meetings, whether it's something that we say or something that we do, or even how we do something. And one of the takeaways, I have sat through these seven-on-sevens as a member and not as a member. And one of the takeaways is it would be really helpful if we could have a plan. So what's really nice is not only do we have the five-year strategic plan, but we have a skeletal five-year budget plan. And this five-year budget plan means that anything that we can't get funded, we push out. But it also could potentially steamroll into putting out and putting out and kicking the can and not getting things done. So we have put an aggressive schedule for five years to try and get caught up in our pay scale, caught up in programs and services, caught up in indoor seating for our students, as well as maintenance on our aging facilities. So we're hopeful that we have brought to light something that you've asked for in a five-year plan along with our five-year strategic plan, and hoping that the two can make things a little bit more clear as where are we going and what are we doing. Thank you.
Supervisor Vanuch.
Thank you so much for the five-year plan. I know that was, that was my thing-
It was.
That I harped on, I think, my first or second year on the board, I can't remember. But when I, yeah, because we shared the same term. So when I look at this, just really, because I just got it, so I'm glancing at it, I think I'm understanding it. FY2024 proposed, says $416 million for your school budget. And then I read on here, your total operating that you're requesting is $442.
For what we're asking?
Yeah, the school board budget. So why is that different than the first year of your five-year plan?
Because this is the superintendent's and what you, if you, so if it's a-
This is the superintendent's five-year-
Correct.
So then every year, you'll change this?
Every year, if there is something that comes. Like, we're trying to expedite some things that are just really glaringly a problem. And so that's where the difference is. So potentially, yes, there could be opportunities for us to change. And, but we've also kept things sort of light in that fifth year so that if we do have to move things, we have this place to put it.
And Madam Chair, constitutionally, the board can only adopt one budget at a time.
Yes.
And this does reflect the superintendent's outlook as it relates to the, the school board's adopted strategic plan. It's fully expected that there's a lot of variables that will change over the next several years. Your inflation rate and cost of capital will change. Your cost of a number of services and access to supply chains will also change, hopefully positively. So we do expect some of these numbers to fluctuate. But it is our estimation in today's dollars as to what some of the things that we know that the board wants to get accomplished will cost in the, in the outlying years.
I totally understand that. And we have a five-year plan as well, which is why I was like, oh, it'd be great. Because then we can kind of see, and our constituents can see, okay, this is the plan. This is what the tax rate would be if we stick to it. Now, obviously, there are always external pressures like inflation that make you update it. But my just feedback would be that I personally think the FY24 should marry up with what you're requesting. Like, I don't know if you guys have voted on this five-year plan as a board yet, but we vote on ours as our five-year plan. And so it's, it's, you're not adopting it as a budget, but we, we vote on our five-year plan. Like, this is, this is our strategic plan. So in my opinion, I think it should be the same because you're already starting out with a $24 million difference.
Right. And I think, you know, one of the things that we have supported, of course, is the five-year strategic plan. But we also have supported a staffing standard. And part of this is growing our staffing standard too. So there's elements of this that we can vote in support on, but then there's elements that we can't. So, because we can't commit.
I would just like to say that one of the things we prioritized and the, the school board has added is emphasizing adjusting the salary scales and fixing those so that all of our county employees, all of our school employees are on a scale that is sustainable and equitable. So, for example, the differential pay for hard-to-staff places. It's difficult to be a special ed teacher. It's difficult to have the training to be a math teacher. Because if you have the training to be a math teacher, in most cases, you can get a job in the private sector. The paraprofessional scale has been complicated for, since I've been on the board. So many of the additions that we made are, are built around the idea that we need good employees because we are a people-heavy endeavor. I had 24 teachers between kindergarten and high school graduation. They probably have more than that now.
I have a question for, specifically for school board member Healy. And I know I'm going to put you on the spot. So this was the board's, the school board's budget, but there was one descending vote. And I want to know why you didn't vote for the budget. What was about it that you didn't like?
Well, with all respect, Madam Chair, it is the school board's budget now. You know, whether I voted for it or not, it is the will of the board and it is the budget that was put forth. I, I think you remember when, when you were on your board, I was often the one vote. One way, one way or another, I don't-
Or two?
I don't hesitate, that's right. You and I were often the, the two for-
Totally different.
Totally different reasons, but, but we were, I had company. I, I try to be positive.
She doesn't vote very much, I'll be honest.
Well, but, but I, I think what's important is this is the school board's budget. And it is the will of the board, and this is the budget that Stafford County Public School Board is presenting to the Board of Supervisors. And I think that our chair has articulated a lot of background and, and data to support the, the request. So I would ask that you consider the request in the manner it was put forth. I certainly think everyone has the best interest. And when I say everyone, I mean every one of you, every one of us, our staffs, our superintendent, our county administrator, want to do the best that we can for the, the children in Stafford County.
And I'm not going to sugarcoat anything because I never do. But I am going to mention my concerns. One of my concerns was that, and, and, you know, if you look at the diversity of the population now, we were at one point in time, I think, my children were the only, and I mentioned this before, they were the only brown or black kid in the classroom, and now we have more. So we have more needs in the classrooms. And so when you talk about bringing in more math teachers and bringing in more special- and bringing in more special ed teachers, are they, and you can't find them right now, how are you planning on staffing even if you give them a higher compensation?
So actually, we do have some data that does support that this does make a significant difference in changing the price point. In particular, one of our most significant recruiting grounds, unfortunately, is neighboring school systems. And unfortunately, neighboring school systems also use us because Virginia is a teacher-supplied deficit state. Loudoun County just by itself hires more teachers every year than the state of Virginia produces in, in ed schools. Loudoun County hires more teachers every year than the entire state of Virginia produces. So we're not getting students that are straight out of Virginia colleges. So we do have to recruit out of state and we go to teacher surplus states like New York, Pennsylvania, and Ohio to recruit. But our most successful recruiting is candidly in our neighboring school systems to the south. And we do know what that price point is to lure them away from their current school system in favor of coming to Stafford County. And this proposal reflects that research.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to go back to the diversity question that I had, which was, I, I would not, it would be remiss if I don't mention that. I've mentioned this on the three-on-three and I want everyone to know. As I said before, we have 60% non-white. And so, yes, it's more expensive. But when you take out a department within the central office that used to help that group of individuals, I'm concerned that spreading those individuals around to different schools, which makes sense in a way to me because they will be right there. But once that issue cannot be resolved or root cause analysis cannot happen there, what happens to those children? One. Two. Drew is always, always been on my list, even as a school board member. Y'all would know that Drew is near and there because why? They serve brown and black majority of kids. But you have to remember, you also have teachers in that school that you have to take care of. And so for that not to be a priority, I know Ms. Baumke thinks it's a priority, Dr. Chase thinks it's a priority, and, and we think it's a priority. So that's something that we need to strive to move up. I will, I will back that 100% for that to be on the list, to be a new school because those children deserve it. When everyone here talks about equity and equality, that's where you need to look at and look at those kids that need help. Because if you help that school, you help those kids, you help the teachers, you may help the math, special ed, and all of that that comes. And that's the reason why I wanted to ask about what I asked you all to give me. I don't know if you didn't have it handy. But I want to know, every year that we give sufficient funds, we went up every single year. Yes, local numbers went down in terms of funds, but that's because the state was giving more money. We gave more money because the state was not giving enough. So now that the state is giving enough, we are providing some more help for other areas in the government. But we need to ensure that we take care of that group that is needed the most. Thank you.
After we open our new ones, that's when we're doing this.
Yeah, Supervisor Cohen and then Supervisor Allen or either, either one? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So real quick, Madam Chair, to respond to a couple of your concerns, the document that we just passed out as a refresher was the school board's priorities for capital improvements. And Drew is right up there. It is overdue project number four. We are, we are right there with you. No, we're, we're, we, we would like to renew our favor of being on the same page with you, for sure. And I will say that, that making sure that all of our students feel welcome in all of our schools is a high priority. And, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out some of the efforts that you personally have made in terms of minority teacher recruitment in helping to facilitate a program where we take paraprofessionals of color and help them get licensed and credentialed to become teachers. And that is such an impactful and positive thing. And we're just grateful for that, that type of support because it is the, it, it is the community that helps, helps lift us up in that way. So thank you.
And I just wanted to reiterate that Drew is still very high on our list. The only reason it is not higher is because if we had to shut down Drew, we have capacity in other middle schools to accommodate those students. That cannot be said for Hartwood. We are already overcrowded in just, I mean, literally every elementary school. If we had to shut down Hartwood, we've got nowhere to put those kids. Drew, we at least have a roof that we can put those children under. And that's the only reason it flipped. And I'm so grateful that this board, you know, was able to come to that decision. I think it was unanimous, which was a good step, but it is still not forgotten.
Yeah, definitely. We need to do something about my right development in Hartwood, that's for sure. Supervisor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I don't really have any pertinent questions. The only, I mean, the only thing I have concerns about is the six cent, you know, I translate in my head to the tax rate, almost what, six cents? Delta between your budget and the school board's budget. And that's a pretty significant delta in my, in my opinion. But for me, it's just about, I mean, to be honest, when you say you can't find math and special ed teachers, I mean, my husband is a math and special ed certified, but he doesn't teach anymore. He, he left the teaching industry. But he left. But I almost feel as if that $5,000 difference is being generous because, I mean, he left Fairfax because they weren't paying him enough. So I, I, I for sure know you can't compete with Fairfax. So, so that, for me, I mean, your budget is indicative of, of the county administrator's budget. We're on our side, I mean, we have whole departments where we're severely understaffed and we can't hire people because the cost to compete, forget COCA, just in general, is expensive in the industry. I mean, people have options now. And there's no longer that, the same factors that drove people to certain industries are not there anymore. I mean, I'm a nurse. I work at Stafford Hospital. They're enduring the same thing the schools are. We're, we lose nurses up north all the time. So, I mean, it's no different. But, you know, I, I mean, Mr. Cohen always tells me, I love to say, I told you so, but four years ago when I got elected, I said that we needed to have a tax rate plan to get us till we wouldn't be here or all the chickens were coming home to roost. And I said we need to have a steady tax rate and do not lower taxes or even equalize the tax rate. And we've done that, which I didn't vote for, but we've done that. And so now we're faced with enormous outside pressures to fund our schools and our county government and our public safety. And that's all this meeting is showing us is that, at the end of the day, our tax rate is not gonna be something that people are gonna be comfortable with. But this is what is needed. This is what we have to do. And someone once said, you know, a, a, a budget is indicative of a county's priorities. And so for us, when we set the tax rate later, we have to show what our priorities are. I mean, obviously, we have to be mindful that there's a 6% inflation rate and typically that 8%, you're really giving a 2% even from our government side. You're not really giving that true 8%. So the same thing, we have to be mindful with our residents is, yeah, we know we need this, but we have to be mindful that not everyone is taking home the same pay and they, too, have external pressures that they have to deal with and manage in their own family budget. And so I'm, I'm thankful for you guys presenting this, but all this does is reiterate to us that the chickens have come home to roost.
Supervisor Allen, if I, if I might just respond to a couple of things. I'm really glad that you mentioned budgets being a, a reflection of the community's priorities. This is a, a chart that I think is pretty important to us because we've grown substantially as a school system over the last several years. Those are the light blue bars reflecting our student enrollment. And the, the red line is the percent of our budget that comes from county coffers. That has precipitously dropped over the last decade. And the state has taken up the burden in terms of its share of finance. The one rub with this is that we are funded formulaically from the state and that formula has not wildly shifted. So our proportion of funding coming from the county has changed. And as you just said, as a reflection of our priorities as a community, our priority for public education has reduced as a percentage of our budget. So thank you for recognizing that and thank you for pointing that out. We fully recognize that there are a lot of competing needs and competing interests, but as a reflection of our county's priorities, this is a pretty telling story.
School board member Guy? See, I didn't hesitate on that. I practiced it.
Thank you. I've been practicing your name, too, Chairwoman. So I just wanted to say, you, you made a comment about, you know, how are you gonna find those hard-to-find educators? And that's, I'm sure they're gonna figure something out. But what that looks like in the classroom is, I've had four kids graduate from Brookpoint. Every single one of my children have had a long-term sub as their math teacher. I have pulled or made them switch classes and I spent $10,000 of my own money to tutor my children in math so that my son can now work at NASA. I'm happy to pay more taxes and I know other people are and I understand that there's, some people aren't, right? And some people have issues or financial problems. But I also know that every other county around us can figure this out. And they do because they're paying higher and their budget is, they're giving more. So I know that you guys are rock stars and I know you can figure it out because you have to. We gotta figure this out.
Supervisor Gary?
Yeah, there's, there's so much happening here. I'm trying to wait, you know, till, till later in this meeting to talk. But I, I think a couple of things that I just want to touch on. A lot of localities are struggling. I would argue that many of them don't have it figured out. We're all trying to figure out what to do. Our unique situation is that our COCA needs to be fixed. I think we're all in agreement with that. So while we have that chart with what the state is doing and what we're doing comparatively, it's not really quite fair because they're like, we have extra funds, have some money. But it's not extra. Our schools are falling apart. We need that fixed. We need replacement for other revenues that have been moved out for different reasons. And so that's the, the difficulty that we're experiencing and we've all been working on to try and get more funding. The reality is we have to do this, in my opinion. I've never had so much support coming from people all throughout the community, different backgrounds, different political persuasions, saying, you need to do this. So for me, what I will support today going forward, and I know we're not, you know, voting or anything on that right now, but just so all of you know, I want the public to be educated on what the school board is asking. What are the tax implications of these requests? I would love to set the rate advertised very high for what you're asking. I don't think that will happen, but I would prefer that because I want to gather that information and make sure people understand. If we do this, what they're asking for, because I've gotten the emails and I've gotten the phone calls and the comments and all of that, I think people need to understand, if we do this, this is what it's going to cost. This is what is going to happen to your, to the average, you know, increase. And then, you know, people need time to figure out in between there, where do they lie on that spectrum? Because not everyone is average, right? So we have to do a lot more than we've been doing. I think we can achieve that. I, I believe our board understands the necessity of this. I personally do. I had a child who had five different teachers in one year. I have a son who was very talented at playing the viola and he couldn't play anymore because we didn't have a qualified teacher to continue teaching him. And the teacher they did have had to move and go to another school full-time because he was going back and forth. It's unacceptable. It's, it's unacceptable. I've seen it firsthand. I already, I know I'm gonna do everything that I can. We, we do have to make hard decisions. And yes, it is the fault of certain people, but you know what? Here we are and we have to do something now. So that's just where I'm at.
Madam Chair, can I just comment on just a couple of things before, if it's okay with the other supervisor members?
Call and go first before you-
No, that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you sure?
And he's just been waiting for it.
I'm old enough that ladies-
He's gonna complain later, trust me.
Thank you. I just, I just wanna, I want to clarify two things for us that we understand when we're talking about, and forgive me if it was mentioned earlier, but we talk about 33% of our high school students meeting benchmark. But the benchmark is actually the fact that, that is only indicative of the fact that there's a 75% chance that they might get a C or better in college. Like, that's it. That's the benchmark. And we can only get 33% of our high school students there. That's the urgency that we're talking about in terms of math and what that means. And for bigger perspective, as an individual, you know, I'm in the middle of midlife here now and I'm looking back and everything's a reflection on what was, right? But I'm looking now at the kids that are, that are coming out of high school and I'm thinking, my God, when I'm on my social security or in, being wheeled around my nursing home, right? Like, I, we've graduated people that can't figure out a tax rate or can't add and that- She better. I'm gonna get her a sponsorship with Adidas. But, but anyway, but, but the point is, is that's, that's the perspective that we're looking at here. And that's the urgency of this situation here. And I, just two more things, just what Ms. Gary was saying over here. I'm not 100% convinced that increasing the taxes, the personal property taxes and everything else is the only avenue to take in terms of revenue into the county. I definitely think there's more funding streams and sources that, that the county supervisors could be looking at.
Can you give an example of that?
I mean, bringing in small business and sales tax revenue, helping us bring people from other counties to support businesses here. I mean, I spend a majority of my weekends with a nine-year-old, traveling to other counties to do things with her. She plays sports in other counties because they offer that. They offer the hockey she wants. The only thing she does here is gymnastics. But, but we go everywhere else. We go to Fredericksburg for bowling. We go to Fredericksburg for Funland. We go to Loudoun for other things. So, so I'm spending my money in already affluent areas. But, but that's okay, though. But, but then I should have them coming to me to spend their higher tax-paying money earning selves here in Stafford. Bring your money to me.
I'm glad you brought that back up because I meant to mention that and I forgot. And it's very important. I agree with you. I think most of us agree with you and that's why we're working so hard to try and get that development the way it needs to be. But it takes time. It, it takes a lot of time. So in the short term, realistically, what we are asking, what the school board is asking and what we will have to do if we're going to meet the request is increase taxes. There's not another option because we, we can't just say, hey, we're gonna bring in this business tomorrow and then boom, it's done. Like, we're, we're doing this now. This is where we are. So can we bring it back down with proper development? Absolutely. Would we like to do that and can we do that? I really think so. I think there's a silver lining with some of the things kind of on the horizon where we can. But people have to brace with us and just kind of get through this difficult spot for now. So I agree with you, but for now, what we're talking about is we will have to raise the tax rate to achieve this.
Supervisor Cohen? Oh, oh, okay.
And Ms. Sigmund also is waving. I don't know if that she's waving at a friend or, I don't think so. I, I actually have two questions, so we'll go back to, back to the old world. First of all, on the instructional support scale correction, on the, under nondiscretionary, the, the third, fourth?
Second, uh, third box down. Is that a continuation of what we have been trying to do over the last several years in addressing that pay scale inequity and the fact that some of those people weren't even on a step scale?
So, yes, except that this would be the first year of addressing the service scale versus year two of addressing the license scale. We have a, a four-year plan for addressing the teacher scale in five-year increments over the next several years to, to bend that, that slope up. And last year, we weren't able to initiate that for service employees. So this is the first year of initiating that for service employees. The document that's being passed out to you right now is a copy of our teacher salary scale this year, last year, what's proposed. And I swear I'm not advertising for Prince William County, but also Prince William County's teacher scale as a, as a comparison point. Some of the comments that Ms. Randall made earlier is that the average gap between a Prince William teacher and a Stafford teacher is $25,000 for the same level of experience for the same position. And so we realize this not just for teachers, but also for other service employees as well. So we couldn't postpone doing the service scale and still work through the teacher scale at, at the same time. We needed to, to make an end road at doing both.
Right. And the reason why I ask is because the first two years I was on the board, I had to badger a former superintendent to actually, like, address the fact that our support staff was not even on a scale and had not gotten any. So I was curious if, I knew we, we had finally, I mean, they made it a two, two-year process. But I was just wondering if this is just to sort of follow through with what some of us have been badgering. The other question is, if I understand correctly, the, the estimated number of, of funding from the state that we anticipated is actually lower now than when Mr. Vosberg was making his budget so that there's now a delta that would need to be addressed just to meet what you had said. I hate that word. Irreg- I hate that word. Regardless of, irregardless, I hate that. Regardless of what was presented, I think some people don't understand that the basis of that has altered from what we had started from. I just wanted to throw that out there, so people got that before tonight.
That's a great point. And actually, it adjusted a couple of different things and we are still waiting for Richmond, surprise, surprise. As everybody waits with bated breath for Richmond. The original request that came from the superintendent to the school board was actually a local transfer of only an addition of 20 million. But that's since been adjusted up because of a calculation error made at the Virginia Department of Education. Now, the governor did instruct the legislature to correct that, but that has not happened. And it was not reflected in the skinny budget that the General Assembly adopted before gaveling out. So we are on the hook for that difference. And for those of you who are wondering what this is or want to go home and Google it, it was an adjustment that was made in the previous administration for grocery tax relief. And that calculation never made it through. Well, that's a pretty important calculation. It's multimillion dollars. It's almost $4 million worth of state revenue to us. All hope is not lost. Even though that has had a negative impact based on the information that we know now, the General Assembly has also made other enroads with other budget proposals to not just offset that expense, but depending on which chamber of the GA that you're looking at, have also made other investments into public education that could make it into the final budget bill, which would actually adjust up our state revenue and reduce the local burden. Unfortunately, that's not known at this time. Hopefully, before your body decides on what our portion of local revenue should look like at the schools level, that decision will be made. And hopefully, boards of supervisors throughout the Commonwealth are complaining to Richmond to please finish their work and get that budget done, because that impact is still hanging. And it is still looming very large for us, because right now it looks like a reduction in expected revenue, when in reality it could be the other way, depending on how the General Assembly acts and whether or not the governor signs that budget bill.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. Is it possible to get, sorry, a version of this for your non-licensed staff as well? I didn't...
So we actually-
I thought this was the teacher salary.
Yeah, and we actually have that online. All of our budget documents and all of our salary scales are on our budget website. But if you want to get a visual look at it, on the back of your five-year budget document, we have what this looks like for teacher salary adjustment, all phases, and then also what this looks like for service employees, kind of in a graphical view. But that's just service employees in the aggregate, not broken out by job categories. If you go online, and of course, we'll forward this document to the board supervisors, so that you can inspect this more closely, we have everything by job title and job description.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for, because I'm being-
Okay, we have a time check at 6:29. Supervisor Baumke, and then I want to ask Supervisor Quiet Vanuch over there a question about... Because Anthony Toigo is not here. Yeah, later, to explain something. We're in the legal, you know, the legalities of that military benefit. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, going back to the budget. When we look under compensation on the five-year summary, under benefits, increase in health benefits, if we have 41 new FTEs, I see a number of $1,720. And then that number goes down and then goes back up. I need an explanation on that, maybe from Chris or someone. Why would that number not continue or increase?
So this is a cost-plus budget, so that number is on top of the previous year's number. So our total health budget, health benefits don't cost $250,000 or even 1.7 million. This would be on top of our already existing benefits budget.
Okay, so it's the increase of bringing on those 41 teachers?
Actually, this year, in the first column, it's not that. And actually, that is not reflected in this particular line. We've encompassed that in the line above. So you want to touch on that?
So that $250,000 you see in FY '24 is just expected increases in health insurance costs for all employees. And that's the employer portion, so the school divisions portion. And then obviously, there's a portion that we are passing on to the employee.
Correct.
We have not done that in several years. So as Dr. Taylor explained, as you work from one year to the next, that's the increase in the second year over the first year, so it continues to build. So our total health insurance costs are about $35 million a year.
Okay, but why does it go down the next year to $1,003,000? What's happening in our health benefits? And I know we have joint health benefits, so what's happening there to drop it by half a million dollars?
Yeah, so it's actually not going down. It's going up by $1,003,000, not going down.
Yeah, but it went up $1,700,000 one year and the next year it's gone up $1,003,000.
So a lot of our numbers are tied to our inflation factor.
Yeah.
And the number of employees that we're projecting to add. So the first couple of years, because we're implementing our staffing standards, as we get to our later years, we're not adding as many to implement our staffing. It's just the group.
Ah, okay, got it. Okay, that explains something else. Well, and I also just want to, as we talk about COCA, you know, that is a big concern. But I think in addition to COCA, you know, the other challenge that we have, and it's real, and we tried to get changes in the General Assembly, as we have for the last three or four years, and we haven't had any success, is that our veterans' tax now, the exemption, and we all love our veterans. There's nobody here in this room that wouldn't say they love the veterans and what they have done for these chairs that we're sitting in right now for our freedom. And I say that because I mean it. But it's costing $14 million. Is it 17 now? That's money we could be giving the schools. So it was 14, now it's 17. So, you know, and that's annually, okay? So we've got to make that up on the rest of the pool of residents and citizens in this county. So I say that just because I don't think the general public understands that number. And this was a constitutional amendment that was on the ballot in 2009, 2010. So, and that number continues to increase. So I just want to make everybody aware. Thank you, Madam Chair.
School board member Sigmund?
Can I just, one detail to that, because this is up right here and I just want to look at this. The cumulative number from that is 48, I think the last that we checked, at least this last November. 48 million, the cumulative that we have not been able to cut.
Oh.
What is it now?
From the way I'm in the past, it's 2010.
I was given 48, most recently. Do you know what it is? The cumulative?
Now, that's about right. Also, when I first got up to 48, it was only like six or seven million. Like, Spatsy's only like two or three.
Because I got to him thinking all those numbers January.
The difference now is, is like, because the federal government has put so much infrastructure into the Veterans Affairs Office, that like, when my husband first got service-connected ratings, it took him like seven years to go through the process. Now, they're approving them within lightning speeds. And it's much easier to get to 100%, because they've got all of the federal bills that have passed that talk about Asian orange and all those things. So it's, there's a lot more pathways to get to the 100%. So that's why I think so many more people are qualifying, so the number just keeps getting larger and larger and larger.
School board member Sigmund?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to the slide that Dr. Taylor reiterated, that showed the declining investment from Stafford County. These are our kids, and the only way we can control the education they are getting is with local funds. Because as Dr. Taylor said, state funds are formulaic. They tell us how much we get and what we have to spend it on. And then we have a portion of that that is matching. So even, some of our local funds are tied to that state number. Federal funds are even more restrictive. The only way, and we're doing that locally with, as Ms. Guy said, we are even taking some of our budget and even like distributing it micro-locally, so that those individual communities are getting specifically what they need to meet that school's particular area for improvement. You can go on any school's website and see what their school improvement plan is. And that is generally what their focus is going to be on, to reach their benchmarks. The only way we can do that is with local funds, because we have control of that. The 14 people sitting here that can make those decisions are controlling that. And that's why we also can't rank what these needs are. That's saying, do you want food, water, or shelter? We need them all. Our kids need places to learn. They need teachers to teach them. They need materials to learn with or on. We can't do one without the other, or the other, because there are three. But that's why, you know, this is a needs-based budget.
Good point. So, hold on one second. What I wanted Supervisor Vanuch to talk about was simply what Supervisor Baumke already took from us, because we're on the team, legislative team together, and Mr. Toigo is not here. But we wanted to talk about that 14 million that is going up every year and also the COCA. And, you know, Delegate Durant has been working hard. She plans on working harder to get that to us. But when you mention, you know, businesses and not housing, just remember that businesses would come here if they know that they could make ends meet or work towards what it is that they want to see. You ask for restaurants and things of that nature. They're not coming here without heads, so without houses. So one comes with the other. So you choose, no houses, fine. You want businesses? You're going to get the type of businesses that don't have overhead, you know, storage spaces and things of that nature. So you have to be careful. You want to look at Stafford County as a whole. I, too, was one of those, strictly looking at school board. What do we need? What do we get? Rally our parents to come in here and say, yes, let's fund the whole school. But you need to realize that we're not only funding the school. We are making sure that the county gets funded, courthouse get built, school get built. You know, share of public safety, as I said before, always when you talk about, okay, you want to call 911, you want to make sure somebody's showing up. Yes, you want a teacher in your classroom. Yes, you want space. Yes, you want all of that. But we need to make sure that we look at it from the perspective of Stafford County. And that's what I'm appreciating, being on the county now, being on the school board, not that lens of just let's look at it narrowly. I want you all to look at it with me. Like, what all do we need? Because you are also part of the county. What all do you need? And look at it from that perspective. When you talk about needing everything, yes, I totally get that. And one of the things that I want, I appreciate you, Dr. Taylor, but I want to make sure that our citizens know, our county knows that we are taking care of the schools, but the schools are taking care of the funds that we give them. Not on your watch necessarily. But when we talk about changing a bus schedule, and that's a million dollars, right? When we say, you know, Governor Youngkin and they have an error in their report, we make errors too. We're learning. And so when you make an error and correct it and say, you know, like, with that, for example, or changing of a schedule because parents are at us, let's look at it and say, is this the best thing to do? When we, you know, when we are changing the contracts from the cleaning supply and we're giving them a set $15, for example, an hour, they're great, they're happy, but that's going to, that costs us money, right? Or when we, for example, the PERS don't have the flexibility, because now they're in compression. So looking at all globally, I'm looking at those and saying, what can we do to help? So when you come and say, we want X dollars, make sure that when you take that money, that you are providing care to it and saying, we are making sure that every dollar counts towards the health of those children that you all are trying to teach.
I'm so glad that you brought that up, because I think one of the hallmarks of one of the things that I bring to Stafford County as superintendent is that for the last two years, I've brought forward to the board multimillion-dollar cuts from central office.
3.6.
3.6 million dollars over the last two years, looking hard at our base budget and looking at return on investment for just that reason. Fortunately, there is no fat to trim from our school communities. Our schools need every nickel that they get. But we found efficiencies. We found contracts that were expiring, programs that were underutilized, and we reduced them for just that reason, to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. So that's something that you can look for from us. And you see it as the big red number right in the middle of the document that we gave you to show good faith, that we are looking internally first, before we go externally to ask for more.
Can I just, you have-
I feel, yes, I know I have 30s-
Okay, I'm sorry. One second?
Yeah.
And then we'll go on to school board member Warner. And school board member, really, you want to share the time? Go ahead.
I just, Dr. Taylor, could you explain what our budget number, you presented a budget to the school board. We added additional items that we thought were imperative. What would it look like if we just focused on all just the salary components? Which would be the PERS, the teachers, the service sector, and the stipends?
So this is actually a pretty important question, because it actually has a domino impact that could be very negative in terms of state revenue. Because a portion of your state revenue that goes to schools is also dependent on a match. So the programmed monies that are set aside for licensed and non-licensed staff, so looking at your budget document right here, down here in the discretionary section, that top number, 16.7 for the licensed scale, and then 6.8 for the non-licensed scale. If you did not have enough money to support those two particular initiatives, you are also foregoing state revenue that would have been that portion of the match, which is roughly about half. So you are actually reducing your state revenue in addition to reducing your local revenue. And a good question that I think you're also getting at, Dr. Warner, is, you know, what would happen if this number wasn't, you know, a certain way? Well, candidly, the nondiscretionary section is just that. It is nondiscretionary. This is what it, this is the cost of doing business, so to speak, to go from point A to point B. If you add 350 new students, you need a certain number of staff to accommodate that. You can't just add more students and not expect that that's going to translate into more bus drivers, more nutrition workers, more elementary teachers, more secondary teachers, more ESAL teachers and special education teachers. So we account for that. And so these are, these are not numbers that we come to lightly. We try to do this as parsimoniously as we can. But the really big issue is that going too deep into that list without specifically addressing specific items, you at least, at the very bare minimum, have to address that salary component, or else you are, in fact, foregoing additional state revenue.
Supervisor Healy, I'm sorry. Supervisor Healy.
My turn.
I mean, I'm sorry. School board member Healy.
Wow, after 23 years. I don't think, I don't want that job. I would have applied for it years ago.
I thought you said you wanted to run for-
Run away.
I'm just kidding. Go ahead. School board member Healy.
I just wanted to comment, there was a statement made that the community's priorities for education have been reduced. I disagree with that statement. I think if anything, our community's priorities for education have increased, particularly with the demands on the families and the students and on our staff, you know, post-COVID. I mean, we're back in school. That's great. But our students are still, and I'll use the word suffering, because that's the way I see it, from having been out of school, from having to deal with that, you know, isolation. I think we're in a different world today. But I think the community in Stafford County has very high standards for education, as well as all the services. I mean, we want it all and we expect excellence. But things are changing. The world's changing. We talked about our turnover in staff. And, you know, our teachers that were with us for 30-plus years, they're retiring. And that was a different world. That was the world that I grew up in, where you had the same teachers at the school, you know, the whole time you're there. But that's not the case now. Our young teachers have- Our young teachers have so many more opportunities to move, you know, just to, to explore different environments, and they are leaving the profession, but that's been a national issue for as long as I've been on the board. Back in 2000, we had a teacher shortage. We still do. It's, it's, it's no surprise. But I, I, I do want to just say that I, I appreciate the community's support for the schools. I think they do it every day, and they make it a better place for our staff and for our students. Our PTOs, our PTA's, I, I see sitting here the head of one of the book point committees, was it the gifted or, you know, one of the groups? But we have so many people that are in charge of helping out, you know, provide extra resources that we can as a school system provide for, for our schools. So I, I, I just wanted to make that point because I, I think that, that this community has high standards, and we've been able to, to squeak through with limited resources. But I think those days are ending. So we're going to, we're going to have to pay the full tab to, to move forward and to, to excel.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. We're over, we're over by one minute. I'm going to give you 20 seconds.
20 seconds, all right. So I think I can do this in 20 seconds. So, so I, I just want to go on the record as saying that as a tax-paying citizen here, not just a school board member, I feel like we, we all need to do a better job at helping to understand what you're talking about. But I, I will tell you, I feel like I walk these neighborhoods a lot. There's plenty of houses here right now. It's definitely time. If you need help encouraging businesses, you find me and I'll go talk to them. I'll have a, I'll, I'll even make the meal. But, but we have to start bringing that in because that's the feedback now. People want stuff to do with their kids here. So that's where we need to go. I did have something else to say, but she only gave me 20 seconds.
20 seconds. Thank you, everyone. Do you want to...